Good evening, everyone. I am Terry Landers. Tonight I'll be your Master of Ceremonies. And we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you haven't done so already, just during the course of tonight's debate, please turn off your cellphone. If you need to take an emergency call, you can step outside. And if you need the restrooms, they're outside also, just inside the hallway there. Really appreciate our candidates being here tonight. We have Mr. Gary Blunt, and we have Mr. Jim Goodman. And we have done a coin toss during the meet and greet session to find out which candidate will go first. Mr. Blunt has won that coin toss. And so this evening, our moderator is Mr. Harry Tipper. And so he'll be conducting the questions. And we have a great lineup tonight also. Hope it will be informative as you as voters and citizens of Camden County. And we're looking excited, we're excited for tonight. Go forward. Hopefully had a chance to meet Mr. Jonathan Blunt. He is unopposed in the school board election tonight, or school board election coming up. He was here during the meet and greet, but Mr. Jonathan Blunt was here also. Just want to recognize him. And Mr. Harry. And so I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Harry Tipper. And I will come back later. I'll be monitoring the clock. And so each candidate will have three minutes for their responses. And then Mr. Harry, Mr. Harry Tipper will be doing the questions.
Thank you, Terry. And if you hear that, you've gone too long. Okay. So what we're going to do is give each candidate a three-minute opportunity to have an opening statement. And so with that, Gary, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, please.
Is it on?
Okay.
Good evening. Appreciate the invite. And thank everyone for coming out tonight for this. It is always great to have an opportunity to interact. Let me start off by saying my name is Gary Blunt. I'm a practicing CPA here, finishing up my 42nd year tax season. I'm married. My wife and I have had five children. Well, our fifth is a junior 17-year-old go through the school system here. We moved here, I moved here in the 90s, for the very reason, you folks probably moved here as well. I left Savannah. And traffic was horrible there 30 years ago, and the crime matched it. And I came here to this area. My family's been here forever. I've been coming here since the 50s. I've had family here that we've visited, you know, off and on. My brother moved here in the 80s, started businesses here. I have been on the Board of Commissioners now. This is my third, third term. And just like a lot of folks, when they're entering a new venture like that, getting on any, whether it's the council or the commission, you, one of the things I looked about and said, I looked at all the assets and the possibilities that Camden County has. I looked at our, we're an hour and a half from three airports, three seaports. We're on the main north-south corridor. And I said, where's the business? You look at what's happened here in the last 80 years. We had given paper come. Well, we know what happened to that. They came, they took, and they left a mess. And here we are with that. And then we had the Navy base come. Navy base is still here. So what are we not doing to attract business here? And that's, that was the whole, the whole premise of everything we've done that since I've been on, on the commission, is we have got to change the trajectory of our, of our digest. Otherwise, the burden of operating in the governments in this county, cities as well, fall dead on the shoulders of the residential taxpayers. Because it is, it is shifting every year more in that direction. And that's the whole purpose of bringing in major development. And, you know, I've sit and witnessed local businesses in my 30 years here have come and gone. I've seen the empty stores and the folks who've came and tried and left. We've got to, we've got to make Camden County a place to do business. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Yes. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Tipper. I am what's left of Jim Goodman. Was born at Fernandina because St. Mary's didn't have hospital in the first half of the last century. And I was educated in the Camden County school system, went off to college, maintained my residence in St. Mary's until about 1969. And at that time, having graduated from college, made a big circuit up through Georgia, up through North Carolina, West Virginia, back down to the south again, Florida. And spent a lot of my time while I was in Georgia. Thank you. In my hospital career in Waycross, Georgia. I am a retired healthcare executive. I came back here about 10 years ago. After a few years, I ran for city council because of, I was attending the meetings and, and I thought I could lend a hand to the city government of St. Mary's. I am a candidate for the county commission because I believe that we can take a different course of action, that we can more fully utilize the joint development authority, and that the county government, as well as, I feel this way about the city government, are not people who need to be involved in real estate speculation and development. They are not equipped for it. We have hired professionals. We have volunteers who sit on that board of the JDA who are seasoned and veteran developers and people who, who know how to invest and how to get the biggest bang for the buck. And it is not incumbent upon the taxpayers, in my humble opinion, to fund financial institutions. Now, there was a good bit said the other night about Airhead Corporation or whatever they're called. They didn't bring anything here except a hand open. Thank you. And they don't, they didn't bring a, a plan of action. Of course, it's very premature. The main thing they did not bring was a list of satisfied clients on any field, playing field whatsoever. Certainly not on the spaceport development playing field. So I'm running for your commissioner to see if I can affect effective change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to our first question. And just to make it easy for the candidates, I'm going to give them a copy of the question I'm going to then ask so that they can read it as opposed to put up with my bad speaking. So Jim's going to be the first one to answer this question. And it is, what future county-based actions will you advocate to mitigate the threats from rising sea levels and climate change? And please explain how you do it.
I'm going to quote a man named Captain Floyd, who's been on this river almost 90 years, on St. Mary's River. And his statement was, that old river is going to do what that old river is going to do. I said that in the vernacular very respectfully, and that's exactly how he said it, and you can take it to the bank. We are not the Zider Z. We do not have a system of levees and pumps and windmills and an endless source of power to do the kind of thing it would take to mitigate that problem to the extent that it exists. Yes, I said, to the extent that it exists. And we are not going to be able to do anything effective with it. I think it's incumbent upon going back to a biblical standard about where you build your house. And you build it on a high plane, or you build it on rocks, you don't build it in the mud. You don't tempt fate in that direction. It's not that big of a problem if you simply raise your foundation. And the people who built back in the 1700s and 1800s have proven that. There are houses that still sit here today that are on post and beam. And, and they exist. Now, the people may have to wade to them and wade, you know, out to their horse and buggy or car or whatever. And you may have to take some extreme steps, but the structures are going to be there. I think we can coexist with the river. I don't think that there's going to be any government program that's affordable or feasible or reasonable to address that problem. I think that we also need at the same time in our emergency planning to understand that there are no shelters in Camden County. And one of my main jobs in Florida with the Florida Department of Health was nine counties, five of them coastal on the Atlantic side and four inland to address the needs of special needs persons. Thank you, Terry. And we did that by using hardened facilities inland and evacuating the coastal areas. We need to address our evacuation plan. We need to understand that we've got to get advance warning, and we have that now. And we've got to get people out of here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
Thank you. I somewhat agree with what Jim says in regards to what the county can do as far as rising sea levels. We're not dealing with levees and dikes, and we're not New Orleans. However, there are things that we can do, which we've done in the county. You've changed your building codes. You require the, the building to be higher. I think we've increased it two blocks in the county. Obviously, the county does not affect any of the building codes in St. Mary's or Kingsland or any of the municipal areas for that matter. Those are things that we can do prospectively. If you're in a house that's, has an issue, there's not much the county can do for you there. Now, as it relates to, I think the bigger problem that we have here is drainage. Where we have flooding in certain areas of the county, predominantly in Kingsland. And as far as how that, how we deal with that, I have tried, even when I was on St. Mary's City Council, to put together a drainage crew that worked full-time. That's all they did, was maintain the drainage canals and the drainage airways, drainage waterways in St. Mary's to help ease the water off and keep from flooding areas. That's the biggest problem you're going to have. But that's got to be a coordinated effort between the counties and the cities. Because whatever we do, we're, we're buffered by cities most, on most areas. And I have, you know, tried to get, where we're going to put together a master drainage plan to facilitate that. And I, you know, that's still an objective of mine, and it should be an objective of everyone. As far as the ingress and egress, I was on St. Mary's City Council when they started doing the bypass. We helped fund the original survey they like to do to build the four lane that's being built now, out past the high school. The county is wide open on that. That's a state, that's a state project that the county obviously is participates in. And, you know, it's is moving as, as quickly as money allows. We, we, looks like we're going to get you to Harbor Church in a little while, but you're still going to have that gap to getting you to folks to know and out. So the best thing you can do is leave early. We all know, we all have a good idea when the hurricane's coming. And if you wait till the wind's blowing, you probably better just stay where you are. Because if you do try to leave, you're not going to find any place to go. And we are working with that, with our EOC and upgrades and grants that we have coming to build more hardened facilities and to have a place to where there are situations that folks can't leave. You know, we, we recognize that, and we recognize the nursing homes. So that's something that our, our coordinator, emergency management director works on 24/7. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Muzzle, hold on to the microphone because you'll get the first chance at the next question. And these questions are in no particular order. They kind of came out randomly, so we are, we'll be jumping topics. Second question. The voters approved a one-mill increase to fund the JDA. What will you do to ensure the funds are prioritized and utilized each year by the JDA and not redirected by the county commission?
Let me address the JDA situation when I got on the Board of Commissioners. When I got there, they were funded about $250,000 a year. That's enough money to say you have a JDA. That's enough money to pay some salaries, fly to a few conventions, but effectively do nothing. So when we got on, when we got on the JDA, and we met with them, and then I helped get some folks on there that I thought would be very proactive in bringing in industry and things here. We did commit a million dollars a year. We totally do it for five years. Show me something. You know, we're about eight or nine years into it. The JDA is not lacking in funding. We have committed to the JDA. You bring us something, you bring us something that we can work with, we'll do it. Just like at the Mill Properties, with the Jacoby Development. The county's on the hook for that for 10.8 million. If it fails, it's us. That's a back way, a backdoor way of financing it through the tad. You're taking those development monies and you're paying it off. So we've not shorted the JDA. I understand that, and as far as the JDA goes and the spaceport goes, they were the ones that were dealing with the spaceport property from the very outset. And that went on for about a year or so. They came to us, Board of Commissioners, and said, we can't handle it. And asked us, would we take over? And at which point, we did. That's how the Board of Commissioners got involved with the spaceport project from the JDA. At which point in time, we've been working on that ever since. And it's a, an opportunity that, I, I know there's been a lot of misinformation and crocheted information about what's going on related to the spaceport and what's being developed out there. We're not buying contaminated property. That property's being cleaned up. It's been being cleaned up. I've talked to folks who live out there, who worked out there, have been working out there since they were six years old. He'll tell you right now, he'd build a house out there right now on it. And, and that's him. Now, this is an opportunity that the county just cannot let, cannot let go. It's an opportunity to bring in the industry that we need. I'm dealing with spaceport companies, rocket manufacturing companies right now. And we need the time to finish that. You know, we got our license, we got our license in December of 20, December the 20th and 22, at which time we've been negotiating ever since. This is a, an opportunity to change the, the trajectory of the, of the digest and the revenue stream into the county. That won't come again.
Thank you, Gary. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Tipper. The question, the crux of the question is, what would I do to ensure the funds are prioritized and utilized? The same thing I would do with every facet and operation of the county commission. Look at the history. There's been mismanagement. Can't say it any other way. Going back to the PSA funds, millions of dollars missing. Unpaid workers' compensation and other indemnification programs. Out and out theft, and nobody is in prison. Why? During that time, the county manager was out traveling for the spaceport, not minding the store. Got to the point where a deputy county manager was appointed. Going back to the county manager, why is Camden County paying? It's depending on who you're listening to, either the fourth or the ninth highest county manager salary in the entire state of Georgia. Why are we doing that? And what are we getting for that? And what are we paying for a deputy county manager? Who's doing probably a yeoman's job in the absence of real leadership? So what would I do? The same thing I'm going to do for every department. It's spent a nickel and a dime at a time. That was my training in hospital administration. I used the example the other night. When you buy bar soap for the patient rooms, if you buy it with wrappers on it, you've paid more money for the soap than you needed, and you've created a slip hazard with a little wax paper. It's things like that. It's nickel and dime for a multimillion-dollar business. And that is what needs to be done in Camden County. As far as the JDA, they need more money. You can't say that they don't. They could certainly use more resources than they have at hand. Because I've talked with James Lachlan, and he's bound by a budget like everybody else is. If he had the spaceport budget, how much more could he have done? That's a somewhat of a rhetorical question, but I can guarantee you that they could have done more than they are doing. And they're working very hard. I, I think they're doing a tremendous job. It goes back to minding the store plainly and simply. Paying attention to the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Jim, you'll start off with his third question. The principal east coast transport corridor, better known as I-95, runs right through Camden County. If any, what plans and actions will you advocate to ensure that the county is prepared for the future of electric-powered vehicles for transportation and shipping?
Easy answer. And I'll qualify it. I drive a hybrid vehicle. I very seldom burn gasoline. It suits my needs because of the limited amount of driving that I do and the fact that I can charge it up with just an extension cord right in my front yard. So I get my 60 miles a day, which is excess to, in excess of what the vote promises. And my gas bill has been reduced by a couple of hundred dollars per month. What would I do as a county commissioner? I'd leave it alone. It's private enterprise. It's not for the county to provide that kind of infrastructure. That is exactly the kind of thing that some entrepreneurial business needs to come along, invest their dime and their money in it, and, and let people who want to use it pay for it on a fee-for-service basis. So being prepared, I would say the best thing we can do is not chase them off. If they come here wanting to put in charging stations, let them come in and charge them. I love electric vehicles. They don't suit, a pure electric vehicle does not suit my needs, or I would have one. I probably will have one one day. What I'm going to do for you now is to stop talking because I've answered the question, and you're not here for your health. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
Well, I can honestly tell you at this point, I've not had anybody come to me and worry about the infrastructure of the electric charging stations up and down in the corridor of 95. If that, if that became an issue, if the state or the feds or something came forward with programs that we could utilize, take advantage of, and provide grants for, then sure, we would certainly listen to what they have to say. But as far as the county investing its time and the energy and money in providing electric charging stations, I, I don't see that in the foreseeable future. But if it does, like I said, we'd certainly look at it and see what it takes to do it. Touching back on, on, on how these JDAs and how these PSA operates. The PSA has board members that are comprised of all you mayors and other folks. Steve Howard is not in charge of the PSA or the JDA. Steve Howard is the administrator for the county. Steve has no operational or no responsibilities to either of those functions. You know, the theft that occurred, that happened at the PSA was horrific. There's no question about it. And I can assure you, when we discovered it, we reported it immediately. And it was reported way back when. That theft has been going on since 2003. Go figure out how many mayors and councilmen and commissioners have been involved in it. And it was horrific. There is one guy in jail, you know, but are all the culprits in jail doubtful? But the law enforcement handled that, we're out of it. So when you, when you fund these, when you fund these entities, which we all do, the cities and the county, and you provide those monies to those authorities, then it's up to the authority to decide how it's going to spend that money. When the issues of the PSA came up about them not fulfilling these obligations to the county, when I became aware of it in the budget process last year, y'all saw what I did. Put them on a daddy-day notice, threatened to cut funding, start providing financials. That's the only tool the county has with the PSA at all. I can't go in there and direct them to put picnic tables out or, or anything like that. Just as I can't direct the JDA. But I can assure you, every time the JDA has come to us with a worthy project, we have certainly accommodated and we have certainly financially backed them on everything they did. As far as letting them sit over there with four, four, five million dollars in a fund balance, we didn't see the need in that. They know every time they've came to us with a worthy project, we helped them. We funded and we backed them. That's all we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Biggest challenge in moderating any of these things is making sure the right person gets the microphone first. Anyway, so, onto the fifth question. It's, excuse me, fourth question. Is Camden County retaining the skilled and educated workforce necessary to attract new businesses as well as permit growth in existing businesses? If you do not think that it is, what actions would you champion to improve retention of area graduates and military personnel changing their careers? Gary?
It is a problem, and it's been a problem for many years. I, I can assure you, I can't tell you exactly how long we spent trying to get the tech school that got built out in Kingsland. It's been at least 20 years. We do have a problem with skilled labor here, you know, unless, unless the Navy has it. And to bring the track industry here, you have to have, you do have to have technical schools, low-technical schools. I know the co, the high school has got their, their own technical courses out there where they're training folks in skilled labor and skilled jobs. But all of us face that problem. I've got two boys that are grown and gone because the jobs wasn't here and the opportunities wasn't here. That's something that we've all faced. I would love to have them somewhere besides Charlotte right now. But it's not. So what do we do moving forward? One of the things that we've been doing with, you know, as it relates to spaceport, I can't tell you how many colleges and universities that have contacted us wanting to bring programs here, wanted to interact with the high school here, wanted to bring STEM programs here, telling us, if that occurs, we will be there. That's how you bring trained labor forces. You get the industry coming here. The Navy, we are working with the Navy. The Navy is all in with us, with the spaceport. Because they have trained, they have trained workforce that are leaving because they have nowhere here to stay and do anything. These are the type of, of technical job, engineering jobs that we want to bring here. Other than training to, to work at McDonald's or Wendy's or Walmart, there's nothing here to work for unless you're going to work for the school system or the Navy or the county. There's, there's, there's not industry here. And that's been our problem for years. And, you know, that was one of the reasons when we got in there, we did fund the JDA. You know, if we keep doing the same thing that we've been doing for the past 80 years, we're going to end up with the same thing we've had for 80 years. And I can assure you that we, we're in the process of negotiating these things, and we just need the time to finish it out. So to bring, to bring a trained workforce, you got to have someone here to train them first. You got to have something here to attract them. And we're, we're working with that. We're working to expand all of those, all those programs, the technical school, Georgia Tech, Georgia Southern, they have all contacted us here and want to bring in STEM programs. So I can, that, to me, that would be one of the best things that we could do for our, our, our county as far as having, when the industry does come here, just like when you go in up 95, you see Georgia Tech right off the airport up there. Why? Because that's where Gulfstream is. That's where their engineers are being trained to go straight to work for Gulfstream. And that's what we'd like to have here. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Tipper. Well, you're looking at the 1969 poster child for leaving St. Mary's to go find gainful employment. Graduated with a, an undergraduate degree in psychology, one of those useless liberal arts degrees in spite of the advice of my father, who was instrument leader man in the paper mill, who told me he could get me into the Bailey-Foxborough Meter Company's internship program in Massachusetts. program in Massachusetts, just on his say so. Wish I'd have done it. You know, it would have been one of those hundred thousand dollar a year plus jobs that developed pretty quickly out of the paper mill. It's personal responsibility. I maintain that any, any bright person who graduates from either a technical vocational program or a college program with a, a degree in some type of applied science or whatever, science, technology, engineering and math particularly at this point, can find gainful employment. It's personal responsibility and personal initiative. We do have a fine unit of the technical vocational school and thank you very much for supporting that county commission. It's a great program. It's a, it does have a good reputation. My daughter was appointed to the STEM advisory committee for the spaceport four years ago, had one meeting, has not had any contact whatsoever since that time, but did see her name the other day in the paper saying she was on this committee and, and was actively participating in it. It was news to her. There's a great deal of reference to this sort of thing, but there's not a great deal of action regarding it. What would I do? I would continue to support the local vocational technical school and the local college in their programs because you can get it there. It's a matter of your own personal initiative. I'm going to yield again because I've said what I needed to say. Thank you very much.
Well, Jimmy, you're back up for this question. And by the way, Mr. Tipper is my father. Harry, please. And I don't, not ready to join in his position because he's pushing a daisies. Anyway, in Camden County, is there a reasonable balance in recreational resources and opportunities available for people of various age groups and social economic conditions in rural and municipal areas? If you don't believe that there are, what would you sponsor and budget to improve opportunities and balance?
I think we have facilities that aren't well managed. Case in point, a friend of mine texted me the other night that she had arrived at the rec center pool for the aerobics program that she thoroughly enjoys and takes a carload of people to, only to find the sign that said pool is closed. Now barring some emergency situation, why wasn't that maintained to the point where it could have been kept open? There was no explanation given. It was a lot of difficulty for the seniors who traversed the distance to that. And that, believe me, is a big deal anymore. I understand that extremely well, being 74 years old, on the verge of 75 and, and with the cost of transportation. So we, we have facilities, we're just not managing them extremely well. And as far as the various age groups, I think there's something out there for everyone. It's just not managed extremely well. I think we, we lost a jewel of a pool and there was so much misinformation about the liner in that pool. The, I'm talking about the original St. Mary's Recreation Authority Pool, which I played in the foundation of and played on the sand pile of. It's a finished concrete pool, never had a liner. Those were astounding words to read and there are all kinds of ways to solve problems with piping on that pool. So in sponsoring additional programs, let's improve what we have and let's correct any disparities that exist. I think that there are some disparities between some of the programs. I know that some of the communities are more vocal about them and they don't seem to be exaggerating. They show pictures. They, they show things that have been done that make no sense whatsoever. For example, in the Harriet's Bluff Assembly Building, they took a perfectly good convection system where the heat is drafted up for, through a cupola and converted it into a mechanical system, an electrical system. And then they boarded it up. So it's a heat trap now. Makes no sense. Makes no sense whatsoever. You're about to pick that sign up, aren't you? You were. Go ahead and wave it at me. Again, I don't want to just sit up here and talk. I've said what I need to say.
Reasonable balance. Is that a fact, fact versus perception? My, my fact of it, your fact of it, your perception, my perception can differ. We have a PSA. We have a PSA that's fully funded and the PSA, the PSA is responsible for that. We have a PSA member sitting in front of me. He knows good and well. I don't go to his PSA members, our type board and tell them what to do. Why? Not my job. If you're going to be a commissioner, you need to understand what your job is. Managing the JDA and managing the PSA. Yes, I can look at performance. I can look at prospective funding. I can work with the mayors and the other members of it and I can call them into question, but I don't get into, and I'm not supposed to, just get into the day-to-day operations of the PSA. I've had folks sitting up there, coming up to that commission meeting for years now complaining about picnic tables. Out in the Harriet's Bluff area and other areas. Well, it's the same problem you got in a lot of areas. You, we go out, we spend a bunch of money on these facilities. What do you have? You have vandalism. You put out lights, you put up this. Now they complain about, well, you took, they can't cook at these facilities now. Why? Well, we can't go put it up like you can in your backyard. We got to be ADA compliant. We got to, we got to, we got to pass all the health and safety boards. You want to put an oven in one of these rec centers out there where you can cook at the park? It's got to be a ventilated system. We understand that. But once again, those, those are the PSA issues. And I suggest you attend to PSA meetings and you voice your concerns to those folks. They have representatives from the county and the city, all the cities and citizens at large. I don't think we've short-sheathed them and I think they have the funding to do what we, what we need them to be doing. And I think considering what they came out of and what happened several years ago, with all the theft and corruption, it was terrible. It was awful. I had the one great pleasure saying, I was never involved with the PSA, never attended a meeting, but I wasn't aware of it. But I can assure you when we became aware of it, I took immediate action. I called everybody in to deal with it. And I, I will say at this point, the PSA is providing the financial statements. They've not completed their audits yet, but there's some issues with the auditors and I understand those. But those are coming. And I, I feel like the PSA is improving. It's, it's like anything else. You got employee issues. You mean, I don't, I don't have a client or anyone in this county that doesn't have employee issues. I got the Wendy's next door to me, they close half the time or they can't open their libraries because they can't hire people. Those are the issues that they all, we all have to deal, deal with. They want you, they want you to pay them $20 an hour to show up and look at you. And if you try to tell them anything to do, they get boochy lip, want to go home. So a reasonable balance is difficult on a good day.
Going to shift gears a little bit. Tourism is a vital part of the Camden County economy. Visitors come to our communities and open their wallets, providing much-needed revenue that supports projects throughout our community. As a county commissioner, if you choose, how will you encourage the growth of the tourism economy within Camden County? Gary?
Well, once again, we all need to understand our lanes. The county, the, the cities are really the tip of the spears on the tourism issues. St. Mary's, Kingsland and Woodbine. We certainly will assist and, and provide anything the county can do in those regards. As far, as far as tourism project, you want us to build a playground or build an amusement park and see if they'll come? No, that's not what we're, that's not what we're in the business to do. St. Mary's is, a lot of its economy is tied to the visitation that happens out of Cumberland Island. Well, when the folks gave Cumberland Island over to National Sea Park, they limited it to 300, 300 people a day. We could have a two-hour debate on that at another time as to what my opinions on that is. But as far as visitors and folks coming to our communities in St. Mary's, St. Mary's is a beautiful place. It, it's a, it's a quaint and everybody wants to maintain that. Yet for some reason, a lot of folks, when they do get here, want to change it to where they came from. But they came here because they liked what it was. I get it, you know? I don't understand it, but you know, it, it doesn't seem to work here. As far as encouraging visitors, we, we support the development of St. Mary's and whatever they do in there, just as we do in Kingsland whenever we can. But those guys have their own departments that handle that. We don't have county tourism to speak of, but if there's joint ventures and, and with the cities, certainly we'll look at it. We'll, we'll do whatever it takes.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Harry. I agree with Mr. Blunt and a lot of what he said as it currently exists. What I think we do have is an opportunity to develop something that you can't find anywhere else in the 110 miles or so of coastal Georgia, the largest area of any state, the largest coastal area, and that is pristine areas. And even though it's a contaminated area, it has been approved for certain day uses. You can't go in there and build facilities on it where people will habitate it. But wouldn't it be a tremendous tourism draw for people cruising up and down I-95 to talk about this coastal area and this natural habitat and to advertise in Condonast and Traveler and other places for this burgeoning population of well-funded discretionary income people who love to see the rosier spoon bills and to see things in their natural habitat and to get into a kayak and ply the, the coastal waters and the sea actually and participate in some cases, a shrimping operation, their charters, you can go out and do those kinds of things. It's, it's waiting to be developed and maybe it's not the purview of the county itself to do it, but the county can support whatever agencies will step forward and develop these things. Yes, the cities do tourism. I'm on the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the City of St. Mary's and we are constantly advertising, we have a presence that people aren't, aren't even aware of, even at the visitor center. And we advertise on the internet and we have a tremendous trade of people coming in simply to get on a ferry boat and go over to the island. And the, the bicycle club has done a tremendous job in supporting the trails and have completed the connection for the bicycles to be rolled right on to the boats and, and to continue on through and into Florida. That is a tremendous thing and it, it's, it was hard fought and it's not going to be instantaneous, but it's building steadily. So I think we can support those kinds of things. As a county commissioner, I would encourage that growth. I would encourage cooperation with all of the agencies. I thought I was talking about something you really liked. So, thank you. We have room to grow. We have room to support this. Thank you very much.
Entrepreneurism has been on the rise since the impact of COVID-19. What are your ideas for supporting and growing the entrepreneurial spirit in Camden County? Jim?
Thank you very much, Harry. That again is one of those, and, and I like the phrase Mr. Blunt used, stay in your lane. I don't know that the county has a tremendous obligation to support entrepreneurism. See, I can't even pronounce entrepreneurism. So I think that as long as we do things like provide infrastructure, maybe communications infrastructure where you see cities and counties sponsoring improved internet access where people can do these kinds of things and do it efficiently with the correct amount of data streaming from their homes, that might be one thing that we can approach. It's a hands-off thing. Once it's built, there are grants available. There are companies who would participate in it. Again, not in a public-private venture, but just as an opportunity to say, this is, this is an area that will entertain this and we'll make it as easy for you as we can. You can put your towers up on certain properties like at the, at the dump on the back area where there will be no development. The county can do things like that. But otherwise, I think it goes back to private business. It's private people involved in, in sponsoring their own self-sustaining entrepreneurial spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
Thank you. Entrepreneurial spirit. I came here 30 years ago with no clients and opened up and operating ever since. I understand just what it was, what that means. My brother came here 10 years prior to me, built a park store, two tire stores. We understand the, I'm having the same problem Jim's having with it. We understand that spirit. How about that? I will say this, you know, when I was on St. Mary's City Council and being on the commission, we don't get the brunt of it as the cities do, but I could tell you one of the issues that always comes up when I deal with clients. It's a difficult to do business here. It's difficult to get this and difficult to do that. One of the things that I wanted when I got on St. Mary's City Council the first time was to look at consolidation of services or joint services. That being, when someone comes to Camden County wanting to develop a business or bring a business here, they should come to one place. We could have a joint building where the City of St. Mary's, Kingsland, Woodbine and the county is sitting in there with their planning and zoning and they can come in and they can, they can talk to all three. We're all sharing our overhead, you know? We're all sharing resources, be much more efficient, much more productive, where someone can come in and say, what does it cost for me to do this in Kingsland? What does it cost for me to do this in St. Mary's? What if I do it in the county? And find and get a place to get those answers. But no, they're running all over the county, running between the cities, looking for all that information. You know, just like when I came on fire services. We got three different fire departments. You know, that was one of the things that I wanted to look at. Well, after having gotten on the commission, we have, we do have a lot of joint services with the fire departments now. They function very well. We, the county provides the ambulance services for the whole county. So it's the county ambulances and all your fire departments. When you get a call, when someone in 911 comes in and there's a fire, before that, folks would think that the closest person, the closest fire department would answer. No, that was not the case. Sounds crazy, but it wasn't. We got with the fire departments, we got with it and we put it to where the closest serviced, fire department service to that, to that fire is who responded regardless whether it was St. Mary's, Kingsland, Woodbine, those type of things. Make them more efficient, make them more responsive and you know, so making it easier to do business in Camden County was certainly helped promote and develop that entrepreneurism that you're referring to. I got it out. All right. Thank you.
What are the most pressing financial needs facing the county and how will you address those needs? Gary?
You just jumped us up to number 15, I see. I can tell you a lot about the pressing needs of the county. I'm right in the middle of the budget process. I got a book in the trucks about that thick. I've got $5.3 million in additional funding request from the county departments. A little something different that, you know, when you've been on city council, that you're going to need to come familiar with and that is called constitutional officers. There are five constitutional officers in this county. Probate, magistrate, clerk of court, tax commissioner and sheriff. It is our duty to fund them adequately to perform their services. Once we hand them the money, they can spend it however they want. We have absolutely no control over how they spend or what they do. But I've got all the- But I've got all those agencies requesting $5.3 million. We have additional revenues based on the increase in the digest and those of you that are homesteaded, it's not going to really affect you. As far as the county's concerned, your digest was frozen in 2008 or six, I can't remember now, whatever the value was. If you recently bought, it's whatever you recently paid for. But for example, if you had a house in 2008 and it was assessed, assessed for the county at $200,000, if it's at $500,000 right now, the county collects tax on $200,000. That's not the county's design, that was from the state. It doesn't affect the cities. The cities gets the increase in the digest. But one of the biggest financial needs we have is our digest is trending downward from commercial and industrial to residential. The cost of doing business as a government is not going down. The sheriff's office budget request for fuel this year, I can show it to you, I think it's $780,000. Yeah, it was 326 last year. We've got payroll request increase right now of a little over $2 million. That's not new people, that's just paying the ones that are here. Vast majority of that, about 47, 48% of that was the sheriff's office. Everybody says, well, let's pay them. Great, let's pay them the money. I've got $2.4 million without going up on the millage rate. We went down on the millage rate from 20 to 21. It was .22. Yeah, it was, it was small, but it was still down. We did not increase the millage tax rate. If we do not address the trends in our digest, the exemptions, all of us in here, we're all in that exempt, homestead exemption and we're in the age where we get further exemptions. And that is steady growing in the Camden County and that impacts the county revenue tremendously each year. Which why I reiterate, if we do not alter the trends going in our digest, it is only going to get worse because the cost of government is not going down. So if you want, if you want me to make those payments to these folks, I'm happy to. You just tell me how many meals or how much you want me to go up, come to the meeting. I'll show it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Jim?
Thank you, Harry. It's easy to identify what is a pressing financial need is when a sheriff's deputy is making less than a fast food worker in this county. It's when we can't retain law enforcement officers and emergency dispatchers at the 911 center because of low wages and shame on those deputies for burning gas that's, you know, twice as much as it used to be, chasing baddies. Let me tell you very quickly, when I worked in central Florida in a county health unit for the big state health department, in the coffee room, people would say, I'm going on vacation up north consistently. Be careful when you cross into Camden County, they will catch you there and it's true. You come into Camden County misbehaving yourself and speeding, God bless our officers, they're out there and they're turning in drug dealers and all kinds of things. They need the money to do it, the funding. Where does it come from? Mr. Blunt's right, it's got to be business development. It's not going to be retirees, it's not going to be people moving here to live here and do small things or things that aren't, you know, captains of industry type things. It's going to be business development. We got a couple of nice ones coming along in St. Mary's at the former airport. We need more of those. We have Plug Power coming along. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for whatever you did to bring that. We need the JDA to be well-funded so that it can get out and do these things. Let's go back and touch something. Let's go back to the PSA and the money that was spent there or wasted there. The County Board of Commissioners would like to tell you that it's the, the JDA is a separate entity, but at the same time, we heard them say that they would cut the funding off. He who controls the funding is in charge of the agency. If the, if the PSA, being an independent board, does not answer ultimately to the Board of Commissioners, who do they answer to? And that's easily demonstrable by the fact that you can cut their funding off. It should have been cut off immediately when, when things were found. Let's go back to audits. Let's look at the, the spaceport having spent $11 million and we don't have a detailed audit. We can't trace that money, we don't know where it went. We need to look at all of that. You can scoff at that if you want to, but it's an absolute fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This will be our last question and to give everybody some time to wrap up. And this is the flip side of the last question. What are the top non-financial issues facing the county and how would you address those issues? Jim, you're up first.
Thank you very much. I don't know of a thing in the world that's non-financial. I don't even have an idea of what would be a non-financial issue. Nothing is free. You cannot say that you proposed to do this. You cannot, in the physical world and the fiscal world, you cannot do one thing. If you do this, you have taken from somewhere else. So it does come back to money. It's a, it's a monetary-based system. If you intend to create a new program, you got to have money. If you cut a program, it's going to release some funds. Where do they go? So I, I think it's, excuse me, Harry, it's a bogus question. Top non-financial issues. And I will respect it very much if, if my worthy opponent can tell me what a non-financial issue is, maybe I need that education and I admit that I do because I cannot think of how to address a non-financial issue. Is it a religious issue? Is it animal, mineral, vegetable, spiritual? What is it? I don't have a clue. I won't sit up here and song and dance you any further. It's a baffling question to me and I await with bated breath. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
That is a conundrum. Anytime I've ever been in budgets and we get mandates from the state, you know, it's always when you get to the F-word, funding. Does it cost anything? You want me to pay them deputies more? Sweet, I want to pay them more. I want them to have all the gas they need to ride around. Great, I'm not against it, I'm just telling you where it is. I'm telling you where the numbers is. You want to stick around? I'll bring the book in here and show you shortly. I'll show you exactly what they're requesting and it's not against the sheriff. They are having retention issues. We have maintained a very tight budget. We inherited a digest that was 35% down when I came into office. We are now 10%, we are still 10% below the taxable digest base when I took, when I took office. We have a fully funded fund balance, we have no long-term debt. Financially, the county's in great shape. That's undisputed. We would be the envy of 158 other counties, but you go find other counties that do not have long-term debt. We have, we have managed it tight. Yes, we do need to look at some payroll issues. We need to look at it county-wide and that's exactly what we've done. We commissioned a study back in the fall. We're now at the process of going through that to look at seeing what it's going to take to make those adjustments so we can have that retention in our workforce. Non-financials, non-financial issues, you know, I'm much better with the financial issues. Non-financial, somebody's not happy, I can't help you. I will tell you this, the things that we've done since we've been there, we're developing, we're getting a new public health department, is being located out next to the hospital. John Morrison and I went to the hospital and they agreed to give us the property. We're having a health department that's built out and it's going to be functional, that's going to be effective. It's a four and a half million dollar investment, been working on that for about four or five years. When I first got money in this, in this plot stone, 1.2 million. Been involved in it ever since on the board. Financial, non-financial issues are not a problem for governments to deal with. All, all things that matter to people are financial. You know, when people want you to, why can't you pay for this or do more with that? It takes money. And it's, it's like I tell everybody, you get everybody to agree to go along with it, I'm on board with you. But in the meantime, when you're the county commissioner up there, you're the one that's got to look at these items and you got to say, well, yes, no, maybe, can't do it, no, we're going to have to go up. And you're the one to take those calls. You take the complaints of the ones when you do go up and you take the complaints of the ones where you didn't get funded enough. So it's a double-bladed sword. You have to be very judicious when you go through doing that and I have spent inordinate amount of time doing it every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, that will be the last question for our program, but we are going to give each candidate a opportunity for three minutes to do a closing statement. And since Gary, you were the last one with the microphone, you get to do the first one.
I gave the other.
Yeah, but you, okay, if you'd like to see.
I gave the other.
Okay, Jim, why don't you start for the closing statement then?
Harry, why don't you give a statement?
I'm the moderator. I get to be impartial.
And a fine job you've done too. And Terry, you've done a great job timekeeping. I appreciate it. It's such a pleasure to see you raise that flag up. This, this has been enlightening to me tonight. I have a deep appreciation for, I don't like to call him an opponent, but I have a deep appreciation for the fellow sitting here beside me. I have a deeper appreciation for the job, how big of a job it is. I have less of an appreciation for some of the things that have gone on in Camden County and I've been pretty vocal about that. I, I think that we are missing the boat on a lot of things. I think we're missing the boat on communication. I think we're missing the boat when we have a county commission that is willing to sue its own citizens for exercising a constitutional right to redress their government. That's unfathomable to me and I got pretty angry talking about it a couple of nights ago and I, I don't want to get that angry again. Yeah, I do. It's infuriating to think that you have a state constitutional right that you exercise and then your tax money is taken. And I think they said we cost them $250,000. We didn't cost them that. They cost themselves that. They didn't have to go to court to sue us for exercising a constitutional right. It's bogus. It's absolutely ludicrous and it's infuriating to think that I had to be threatened to post a $20 million bond to even ask a question that I'm guaranteed the right to ask. I said this the other night, I'll say it again, it's worth saying, I told them rather than paying a bonding agent, a fee and a commission, let me write you a $20 million personal check, ha ha, because my credibility at that point far exceeded theirs. It's infuriating to think about that. That's, that's so much more serious than anything we've talked about tonight. And we can look back at what we think is misspent money at obfuscation, at concealment and other things that are out there. There's a really aggravating guy in this room and I'd like to recognize him. He'll aggravate you to death with facts. It's that fellow sitting right there on the aisle, Mr. Steve Winkle. Put Steve Winkle and me in office, we'll get you some answers. I'm not ashamed and afraid to challenge the system and he will provide the facts, he will do research to get the facts to you. If you want to find out what's been going on, that's the best way to do it. You say we're outnumbered three to two, we can convince at least one person that wants to be a commissioner going forward to side with us. I will just about guarantee you that. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for putting this on. Harry?
Gary, your three minutes.
Thank you. You know, it's one thing when you're looking to get somewhere to be on the commission and you want to, you want to promise all these things that you going, everything's going to be out in the open, like as though commissioners are hiding. We're not hiding anything. We're operating under the same rules that they operate at the St. Mary's City Council. But there's one luxury that he talks about in this referendum thing, cities don't have to worry about that. That was settled by the Supreme Court of Georgia 10 years ago. Referendums are invalid when it's, when you're administering your tier-one responsibilities as a commissioner. Now, what does that mean? Does that mean that we don't care about the will of the people? No, doesn't mean that at all. I mean, I understand it, but you have a responsibility to the county to maintain it and to operate it. And when you're up there operating within your tier-one powers, and those tier-one powers to the counties, to the commissioners are given by the constitution of the state of Georgia, the power to buy land, to sell land, to raise taxes, lower taxes, to buy equipment, to buy trucks, to do things that you need to do to operate a county. If every item on an agenda is something that you disagree with, is going to be subject to a referendum, you're not going to get anybody going to do business with your county or come and do business in your county. And the cities, the cities operate under that luxury right now because they know it doesn't happen to them. And as far as, you know, going into executive session, making land deals, cities around here do it all the time. They deal with NDA, non-disclosure agreements. I have no problem telling you what's going on, if I could, but the people that we're doing business with, the companies that we're trying to bring in here, the companies that we're working with, they have rights as well. And when you sign those NDA agreements, because they're not going to talk with you, they're not going to come here. You want to talk about bringing people in here for entrepreneurialism? What do you think brings them in here? They go, they want to come into an environment that they, that they can survive in, that they can flourish in, they want to make an investment here. You know, you, you talk about the JDA, we fund the JDA. The JDA has not been denied anything. They're not denied any program, any, any contract that they've brought to us. We've worked with every one of them and we certainly all respect the will of the voters. I know I do, I'm one of them. I'm up there spending my money, just like I am everybody else's. I pay taxes on commercial property and residential property, just like everyone, everyone else in here. And I take that very seriously and I lay my head down every night knowing that I have made every decision that I've made for the best of Camden County and moving it forward and to bringing it where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Well, as moderator, before I turn the program back over to our master of ceremonies, I want to thank both candidates for what is perhaps unusual in this day and age, which is a civil discourse. And so, thank you all, thank you all for here and I'm going to leave as moderator and turn it back over to our master of ceremonies.
All right, if I stretch this for a second. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We want to thank SureStay for providing the facilities here for us. And if you guys want to, the candidates will be around for a few more minutes to get, if you didn't get a question answered, you have something for them, please feel free to answer. Thank you, Mr. Goodman for being here, thank you, Mr. Blunt for being here and thank you citizens for being here. We are adjourned.